I'll settle there.
You'll settle.
Yes. Do you get that often? People can. Didn't stop. The question is. In my soul, and if you have a. It always. Just come to. It'll be a. This. I can, I could, yes.
Yep.
Oh, sure. Yeah. I. No reading here.
Um. So. Yep.
Also, it was sharp. Okay.
Always a good reference.
Make sure to. I'll think of you. Oh. If you don't have the party. This is. Right. And. Why can't anything like. For some.
We had.
Oh. No, that's what's happening. But I'm trying to send the law. Yeah. Well, so I'm going to mine in.
I'm telling them.
That's why I'm coming to today. Give more.
I know, it's just bigger than. No.
Yeah. So that's to run it around. That's why. Oh, yeah. Go just about. Yeah, well, that way you're. First one. Basically, it's two hours. But I'm on the next. Should I go? Yes. And they didn't come out. I said, okay, over. You're a reporter.
Yeah, I do.
I sound like something.
They're watching.
Thank you. Just a couple of. Just. While I try. And you said. I've got real quick. So I was gonna find out. Aaron. I swear. Yeah. Yeah. And who was the last one? No. There's. You got. I see. Very lucky to. Yeah. It's been a lot.
No, I don't.
Yes. Yeah. That's true. It was. Thirty three. But we went for. We like to wait till right time.
I got. I got those.
This lesson. It is. Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah. I know. Here. That's good. Please, while we. English question. No, we sense that it doesn't. Wasn't they having a.
That's.
Yeah. It's. Oh, yeah.
Did you figure that? Yeah. Yes.
Yes.
No. If some of the passwords.
I remember.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll leave the break.
So. That one. Swallow.
And they're fake.
No, I haven't. I'm sorry, yes. Never sound.
It wasn't about. No. I already. Yeah.
All right.
That's my side. Yeah, we go.
Keep moving.
We're talking about so.
Okay, motion, we open this meeting? Here a second.
Second.
In favor? Uh, okay. We have minutes from our mentor meeting September tenth and minutes from our meeting on September twenty fifth.
I make a most few of September tenth to September twenty, thirty minutes as written.
A second.
In favor?
Yeah. Wow.
Ready the minutes?
Yep.
Minutes.
Okay.
On favor? I. Okay. Minutes are accepted. That's right. Thank you, folks. Okay. Moving along. Um, next on our agenda is Blue Wave will submit their preliminary subdivision plans. Um, and here we have, um, just state your name.
Yeah, Andrew Hamel, Weston Sampson Engineers for Peoples Pro KLS submitting um, for section five of your subdivision by law, the eleven copies of plans and the application and check report.
Okay. Thank you. And so which one you? Um, and and Samson with Blue Wave. Okay, Aaron. And Chris Ryan.
Christopher Ryan with Meridian Associates for the Gibbs Brook uh, project.
Okay. Thank you. What is best. Oh, yeah. Okay. Andrew, can we get a uh, I had five kind of point, can we get a PDF of this?
I have an electronic copy in here for you, but I'm happy to send it full via email as well. That way.
Perfect. Oh, good.
We have to.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. And checks are in here.
Checks are in here. And then in an envelope, and then there's also the same form showing. And so. Anybody can sign. Being conscious.
All right.
Yeah. Oh, the check.
Check. Okay, back for seven hundred and twenty five dollars for submission of this subdivision plan.
Thank you.
Two hundred.
That people's stuff, yes.
Yep. So, yeah.
Yeah. That's a form B that you had yesterday.
Yeah. Picture there, cover layer, breaking down the file. I have the same copy of the transcript. Your copy. But. Then we'll be filing for the town where I directly. She's on. Source. They'll have. We'll have the same.
You want to.
Um, I gave one, two. I have one right here. Yep, I weighed out it. Not much for you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Same thing. You get up and stand. Yeah. Uh, checks for seven hundred and twenty five dollars for it's a uh, Gibbs Broke. Oh, see. Subdivision plan.
Yeah. So. Application package, send a letter, breaking down contract by laws, assign application, check to see soil testing forms and why. That.
Okay.
She has. On. Where it was just. To somebody saying.
Yeah. Personally.
Yeah, so and I would make like a deal, I'll send electronic copies. Yes. So. Okay.
Sure. That'd be good. Um. Will, will, the board will review this stuff and we'll get back to you.
Okay.
Okay.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chris Ryan.
And this one.
Okay, moving right along. Uh, motion to call a temporary recess to open the hearings.
So.
In favor?
I.
On favor, so. Uh, now. And no, if you want to read that or.
Just need to. Okay, being. It's. They're. This is so. You're.
Yeah, I'll read that.
And I was just.
No. I've already practiced this with my dogs. Now, and it's, and it's kind of long, this is the whole art. Um. Article one, to see if the town will vote to amend the town's zoning bylaws by inserting a new section eighteen, it, it follows, or take any action relative there too. Section eighteen, temporary moratorium on construction of large scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic installations and battery energy storage systems. Authority and purpose. Town of Blanford currently has three approved large scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic installations commonly referred, referred to as solar farms, completed or under construction, two that are in the permitting process, and three more that have expressed interest in pursuing permitting within the town. Additionally, the town is also aware of a large scale battery energy storage system that intends to see permitting this year. Pursuant to the zoning by large, large scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic installations of battery energy storage systems are allowed pursuant the site plan review as special permit in the export cultural zoning district, which includes approximately ninety percent of town's land area. The town is experienced experiencing unexpectedly high demand for large scale solar facilities, special permits, and together with the emphasis being placed on the development of solar energy to reduce dependence on fossil fuels and potential availability of large areas of open space in the town that is anticipated that applications to, to cite large scale solar facilities and battery energy storage systems in the town will continue unburdened. The unexpected high demand has demonstrated the potential for rapidly changing the basis of the town, therefore raising unanticipated legal, planning, and economic issues and creating an urgent need to regulate the use. At the time of the adoption, the town's current learning bylaws, the scope and scale of potential energy development in Blanford was limited by existing grid constraints, particularly the capacity of air resources, transmission, and distribution infrastructure. The town has since learned, learned of, and is responding to a substantial substation expansion project proposed and permitted by Air Source within the town intended to increase system hosting capacity of the regional grid. According to utility studies associated with the Plainfield Blanford Study Bureau, the existing transmission and distribution facilities in the area do not have sufficient hosting capacity to accommodate the volume of distributed generation, including solar and battery projects. Currently proposed or anticipated, the substation and related distribution upgrades are explicitly designed to resolve these limitations, thereby enabling a significant increase in the number and scale of new interconnections. The expanded capacity of, of the upgraded substation is expected to make Blanford more attractive to commercial energy developers seeking special permits or other local approvals. The town's current zoning framework does not adequately account for the likely volume, intensity, and cumulative impacts of such development, nor does it reflect the modern technological, environmental, and land use implications of utility scale battery energy storage systems or co-located renewable installations. Notably, when the town zoning provisions were last adopted or amended, the regional infrastructure improvements now underway were entirely unknown and not reasonably foreseeable. As a result, large portions of the town, including approximately ninety percent of its land area, remain potentially open to commercial scale energy development under outdated and insufficiently protected standards. The town seeks to avoid unintended consequences of unchecked or poorly regulated commercial solar and battery energy storage development, while it undertakes a deliberate and comprehensive planning process. This process will include public input, expert consultation, and the development of zoning amendments that ensure any future energy development is consistent with the town's land use goals, environmental protections, rural character, infrastructure limitations, public safety, and state regulations. Therefore, this temporary moratorium is necessary, reasonable, and narrowly tailored to serve the public interest while the town updates its bylaws to reasonably manage a rapidly evolving energy landscape. Moratorium will not apply to residential roof mounted or small or medium ground mounted solar installations. Together with the increase in demand, the law concerning the ability of municipalities to regulate solar energy facilities and battery energy storage systems through its zoning bylaws has evolved sign substantially by way of recent court decisions and attorney general review of proposed amendments to those bylaws. The town's recent attempts to address the impact of large scale solar facilities and battery energy storage systems through amendments to its by zoning bylaws have been only partially successful, due in large part to the changes in the law. The town needs time to study the impact of this evolution on its current regulation, these facilities, and adjust that regulation as necessary to ensure that it conforms to legal requirements while adequately addressing the impact of large scale solar facilities and larger battery energy storage systems on the town and the planning goals. Imposition of a temporary moratorium on the construction of large scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic installations and battery energy storage systems will allow sufficient time to assess these issues and amend the zoning bylaws, conform the legal requirements, and address the impact of these facilities on the town's environmental resources and goals. Uh, B, temporary moratorium for the reasons set forth and notwithstanding any other provision of the zoning bylaws. To the contrary, the town hereby adopts a temporary moratorium on the use of land or structures for large scale ground mounted solar vote photovoltaic installations of battery energy storage systems. The moratorium could be in effect through May thirty first, two thousand twenty six, or the date on which the town adopts amendments to the zoning bylaws concerning the large scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic installations and battery energy storage systems, whichever comes earlier. During the moratorium period, the town shall undertake a planning process to study, review, analyze, and address what revisions to the zoning bylaws relative to the large scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic installations and battery energy storage systems are needed or described or desirable to allow or in regulate such use consistent with applicable law while protecting the town's environmental resources and furthering its planning goals. That's it. No. What, um, what the kind of, kind of drives, but hope you all understood, stood that it's, you know, the moratorium that we really need. I'm gonna open for public, public uh, discussion. Uh, let me state some rules before we do that. Um, if you want to make a statement, uh, raise your hand. Would be recognized by the chair, state your name and address, please. And uh, speak up, you'll have, give you two minutes, let's try, try to consolidate your, your thoughts and your words. You have two minutes and we can, you know, stick by those rules, that'd be great. So. A- any questions at this point?
Questions? No questions.
Correct.
Oh.
There'll be no questions. Davis, no questions, please. Oh.
And questions? Each question.
Wait for comments, not questions.
Questions.
Comments.
Like, I don't have to. That's fine. Uh, George Shealy, one twenty six North Langford Road. Um, I'm just wondering, you're saying the moratorium is talking for large scale, um, not the on the house or, or, or a medium scale? And I'm just wondering what constitutes a medium scale versus a large scale? I mean, you talking major acreages or just?
Megawatt.
You know, a backyard. Uh.
It's, it's, it's spelled out in the zoning bylaws as megawatts. Mega, mega watt.
Five gigawatt.
That's the size of it, yes.
Much it generates.
How much me- megawatts it generates?
So how much does like house?
I, I don't know.
Not for residential, it's for commercial. More for him applies to commercial.
Well, my question is, no, like, if medium, uh, are we still cutting down foliage and everything else for a medium scale versus a large scale? I mean, so my question is, why would you include a medium scale and a large scale in our moratorium?
Because we're dealing with large scale, which is very, very large. Yeah, medium scale is mostly best attention. These are, we're dealing with commercial. Commercial, large scale, solar.
Okay, so. Um. Can you please identify yourself first? Can you please identify yourself?
Just open my mouth. My name is Ann Cannon, and I'm from North Langford Road, one twenty four North Langford Road. So, my, my statement is if we're gonna get rid of medium, I mean, we're keeping medium, but we're getting rid of large scale in the moratorium that you just read. So you don't define what a medium scale is. And I would imagine if somebody wants to come into our town to put a solar thing in, they could very easily use that medium scale and just put a bunch of needing, if they consider a medium scale field in.
No.
Because there's no uh, measurements on or anything other than a megawatt thing. But there's no measurements as to how large a medium scale would be as far as acres might go.
No, that's why, that's why we're asking for more returns. So we can make the, the bylaws, the town bylaws to protect the town at large scale. Medium scale is residential, we're just dealing with large scale, commercial systems.
So that's defined that medium scale is residential within this moratorium.
You can go on the town website and in the bylaws, it describes the differences in small medium and large scale.
It is actually defined in our bylaws, correct?
All right, great, thank you.
It's on, so just a point of between medium, large, small. The state doesn't recognize medium, it's large and small, yeah, and it's defined by megawatt hours. So there is no medium scale, there's large and small. That helps. And the moratorium specifically is for commercial use. So if they are a smaller commercial use, it's still commercial use. Okay, so the moratorium still applies, if that helps. Sorry, it needs to.
No.
No, that, that.
Or you can give the hand up.
I had a, a recharge in three, you go clever out. It was a more of a question, and I was hoping that the uh, moratorium steps that you could take through the process for who it has to go through, and how long it may take, if it gets approved, if it doesn't get approved.
Christine.
On November seventeenth, I'm sure you guys all know that we're having special town meeting, and that's where you guys show up to vote in favor or not in favor of the moratorium. Uh, if the moratorium is approved at special town meeting, meeting, it's immediately effective. We have to then send it to the attorney general's office. The attorney general typically has ninety days to review it and get back to us. So in that ninety day period, moratorium is in full effect. Uh, sometimes the attorney general's office will reach out to our legal counsel to ask for an extension to continue to review it, and so it could be more than ninety days, but as long as it's under review, it's ineffective to town. Does that?
Any other comments? Please, please, sir.
I just wrote a little something.
Oh. But name, do your name in.
Oh, we, now, one seventeen chess wrote. But, good evening. Um, here tonight as a concerned citizen to speak in strong support of supposed moratorium with the influx of commercial solar and best projects. With the boat looming on the seventeenth, I urge you to see this as a vital bridge, this smarter, more sustainable planning. Let's be clear, opposing moratorium now is profoundly short sighted, our bylaws haven't kept pace with rapid changes around us. Without this pause, we're rushing into decisions that could lock us to outdated rules and unchecked expansions three years to come. This moratorium provides us with the gift of time. This moratorium provides us with the gift of time. This is not a stance against green energy, it's a strategic reset. It allows us to convene experts, gather input and craft bylaws that truly reflect. Lanford's values, preserving our rural charm while welcoming thoughtful growth. True progress demands preparation. This could be the key. Uh, to bylaws that serve everyone for decades. I implore you to vote yes on the seventeenth and give Lanford breathing room it deserves. Thank you.
I I have a, wanna hear from another resident that's out of town that that I'll read. Who sent to the planning board. This is from Gilmar Gregory eighty four Chester Road. Uh, we are out of town indefinitely and unable to attend in person the upcoming public meeting. We understand. That by not writing and expressing our opinions will be considered as no opposition. First, we'd like to give our wholehearted appreciation to all the members of the planning board for all the work and dedication you all give to our town daily. As long as residents of Lanford and the butter so eighty nine Chester Road, thankful. Project, we would like to express our opposition. To additional commercial solar arrays of any kind as well as best. We are a hundred percent supportive of a moratorium. To give the town committees that are working so hard time to consider and fully investigate these projects as well as. Review of the town's bylaws to regulate solar and best. These projects were to be permitted, we would highly recommend that all wells within a one mile radius of each project be tested. And paid for by the developer. We also recommend that market analysis of all home homes within a one mile radius. Be appraised also at the cost of the developer. Further, the town needs to an insurance policy to protect the town from any disaster. Thank you for your time, respect and go along hard there. That's the only communication I I got. Any other comments? I I I'd just like to make just a quick comment on this, just clarifying. This, this, these uh, this moratorium is. During this moratorium, we'll be working hard, if we if we approve the moratorium, we get, we're working hard to change the bylaws to protect the town. I think we're we're way behind the eight wall and the stuff, like every town in the region is. Small towns got taken by surprise, but we saw this coming and it's just. It's been coming in, it's huge, it's like nonstop now. We. I believe I've been a resident in this town for thirty two years. We live in this town because we like this town the way it is. We've invested in the town, we've paid our taxes in this town, we've bought property in this town. Very few town residents, we're a town of twelve hundred and sixteen people, I think. We like it the way it is. It's rural, it's wooded, it's forested, it's clean, we have clean water, we have clean wells. We have. An infrastructure that takes care of the small population that we have, we have. The only real road that's a highway or even built like it is twenty three, rest are side roads or dirt roads. So we we definitely need some bylaws to. Protect our town and and manage what's what's happening. I don't think we're gonna, I I don't. Personally, I don't have a problem with solar, think solar's, it's okay, and it's good for the environment, and I'll place just anywhere. Right now, our town is said before in the uh, in the article ninety percent agriculture, which opens up. Our town, ninety percent of our town to. Large scale solar, so. We're gonna just try to make some zoning bylaws to protect town and manage so the town. Can benefit from anything that we, any kind of new changes that we get. Any other comments? Sir.
Hi, my name is Al Blake, I'm the chair of the second planning board. And I oh honestly agree with what you're trying to do. My question is, that state mandated bylaws for solar and and. Battery is not due until the end of March. So my question is, how we then have to abide by those by those new bylaws that are coming out? So that only gives you two months, three months, in order to be using them up with a new set of bylaws to hit an older. I was just curious, if you thought about that, how do you think you would do that?
We we think about that, we think about this all the time, yes. Um, we know the times, it 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 moves along pretty quick. We got taken by surprise, we really have no choice but to move fast, move as fast as we can and as intelligently as we can and. Make up some bylaws that are fair and can protect our town and try to get them through. The process that this stuff goes through is, it has to go to the AG, sometimes several times, back and forth. We're gonna do the best we can. That's all we can do is the best that we can. I was just curious if you thought about.
The uh, moratorium is longer than what, because we're thinking about making it till the end of next year.
Yeah, Christine here.
Uh, advice from our legal counsel, they said that to get a moratorium passed, if you're putting it for a year, it's likely gonna get rejected. So that was. You're welcome.
So we're put to task, so we're gonna try to work hard and fast and um do the best we can. And.
Sarah Malzus, Main Street, uh, I just wanna thank the boards for all their hard work. I know it's been difficult, a bit, so a lot of these meetings. And it's exhausting just ending and trying to keep up. Um, and I just urge our residents to look at this moratorium as a, whether you're for or against, indifferent, it's a it's a due diligence. We we wanna do the right thing and this gives our boards, everybody has a life, a job. We we get that you're busy and it will give you time to work on this and I just hope that citizens of the town. Show up and and vote this moratorium and to support our boards and just to do the right thing for.
Uh, I'm David Johnson, twenty six, and bring him back here. I chair the Becker Conservation Commission and so I'm here because. We're having the same conversations going on in this room, it's the same, excuse me. They have the same concerns and that are, you know, our. Our land is a little bit different because we don't have a lot of farming land and the population is eighteen hundred, we have twenty, but like some fawns. And we just have a lot of forests and. You know, when I moved here eight years ago, I didn't realize the virtue of slice and it's really a special place. And I am pro solar, I have solar panels, I like to put in my house, but I can't find a. Person to put them up because I'm unemployed by the solar company, so it's kind of a, a touch too. Uh, but I I, we're really interested on what's gonna happen here. And we had a meeting today and uh, we want a moratorium because this is coming so fast and I chaired a couple of meetings on this. We've done three meetings on a couple of projects. And the way I set it out is, what if we get this right? And we don't know what advice, because we haven't had to deal with getting hippos and we've got four applications that are coming to us and. And we're, we don't have, we don't have the regulations, we don't have the bylaws to really protect the land and water resources. I just wanted to know that we are pro solar, but we've gotta have smart solar, we've gotta really good. Projects and blend in with nature and really don't disturb the animal that, because it's not about the trees, it's about the animals, it's about birds. It's about the soil and the road. Anyways, we're gonna be listening and uh, and we're gonna follow and do something, we're working on it out.
Any other comments? We go over here first.
The year now, one oh one Chester wrote. I, the lady emailed you. But concerning the upcoming discussion on solar investment moratorium in this town, I would like you all to know, we're all very concerned with the projects being planned for this town without us being prepared. The moratorium would give our community at least a little bit of a chance to tighten up our bylaws and decide exactly where and when we want to allow these things or not to be placed and regulated. A town's running on very short staff. And they need every minute they can get, with all the help they can get, to investigate before we allow these corporate projects to go bills over our wonderful country town. There are two different versions of green. One of them made in nature as it is for our posterity to enjoy and another one. Slightly misguided attempt at the expense of the people of this town. We appreciate all your work to investigate and put this moratorium through and see what we can do.
Any other comments?
Uh, George Shealy, Langford, um. The zoning board and the uh. The bylaws, are they one committee? Are they one in the same committee? Or are you, are you the planning board, really the zoning board?
No, we're we're the, we're the planning board, we.
So we actually have a zoning board?
Well, there's a zoning board of appeals, don't ask me what they. The bylaws are are part of the planning of the town, so it goes through the planning board.
So we have people, or is it, are you the people doing the bylaws?
We will be, yes.
You are.
We have other people in town helping us with by, with the bylaws. Uh, there's some people in this room that are helping. So. We will, uh, yeah, we we want some inclusion, we want some ideas. It's important, we'll get this right. Sir.
Brian Gannon, one twenty four North Langford. You must also have um. Resources for either other towns that are further ahead of us in creating bylaws like this. So it's not like you you have to necessarily start from scratch, right? There must be some other towns that are out in front of us on forming bylaws to control the the activity or the application process.
Unfortunately, not really. Um, this whole process uh is come about pretty quickly. For all, particularly Western Mass, the hill towns. And I don't believe, and we got gentlemen here from Beckett, and I don't. And I've heard from other people in other hill towns, um, a little bit farther north. That weren't prepared. I actually talked to a woman at a conference I went to, their, her town had no solar bylaws. So it's it's rather new for these small towns of Western Mass. Any other comments? Okay, I'm, I'd like to make one more comment. I just wanna say. Cause it, there's some gentleman here from Blue Wave. That it would have been really nice for a developer like Blue Wave to get on board with the towns and help the towns. To develop reasonable. Development. Of these solar fields instead of just coming into town and and sticking them wherever they can. With consideration for the town. You folks are here, you look around this room, these are residents of this town, this is a small town. You're a developer of this stuff. I I would have hoped that the state and the developers would have been invested in the towns too. I went on your website this morning, I got your mission statements and all this other stuff that you put out. About. Working with communities, I haven't seen it. I mean, I've been on the board for about for about a year. And we've been dealing with this stuff for at least six months. And I I just haven't seen any help, any assistance, any. Expert advice on any of that stuff. It it would be nice, some sort of collaboration with the towns, with your expertise. That's all I wanna say. Any more comments? Seeing none. Great.
Green Sharpton, again, I just wanna say, if this does happen to go through, which is a possibility. We wanna make sure our bylaws are are strict and that they can do everything possible to make sure that everything that goes on is safe. And that our residents are taken care of, because there's a possibility that it could pass no matter what we do. But our bylaws will keep us a lot safer, so uh, it takes time, it takes a lot of energy. But they are working on them and I know this. And like I say, we're gonna make them as tight as we possibly can in case this happens, because. It very well could. I know, uh, Lisa and myself went to O Ham. And uh, they were in charge of the board and we could ask them for a meeting. And they had all their eyes dotted and their teeth crossed. And uh, we could put up a fight, it will take a while, but this is a possibility, just because we change our bylaws does not mean it's not going to be true. And you have to face this. It is a possibility, but if we stick together as a community. And we get the help that we need and the people are invested in this, we can put up a really good fight.
Any other, any other comments? Seeing none. Uh, close the hearing. And we're gonna go back to the plan board meeting and open any more discussion, health. Any discussion, board members? Thank you.
Thank you.
See you none, I forgot. That's minutes, minutes for September twenty fifth, passing around, right? Sarah.
Okay.
Sarah.
And they, if they're September twenty fifth, they certainly are.
Thank you, guys.
Good evening. So we can, we should discuss this one, okay? So.
Len, I just gotta catch myself up. We didn't do any of that. Greg made a vote to prevent this happening, although we're still happy that Jerry's opening.
Why didn't you know? Minutes. Maybe we got everybody got.
You gave those before.
Now there are two sets.
Okay, oh, oh, we got the two texts.
No, okay. So what? And the community was only getting. Again, how we're doing. We're doing a vote to. To. We have a vote. After the approving.
Okay, so the discussion is.
I'm sorry, I'm just typing what everyone said.
Okay, that's okay. We'll we'll. We'll wait. Okay.
Oh, you know that one?
I didn't stay.
Also, that whole thing that you read at the beginning. I only copied and pasted from the notice that we posted. So that whole big thing, can I get copied that second?
Yeah.
Okay. I I got that off the website. That's the notice for the special company.
Okay.
That's where, yeah, cause I I was in a rush to.
Cause that was nice and it stunned everything up really.
It did.
Better than what we imagined.
Yeah, I just I I read it this morning. We loved it.
It's irresistible. What you like?
I didn't know.
Yeah, I see you.
I don't know. So are you ready?
Now there was a whole bunch of language that I was refraining. Yes, I'm ready.
I read your lips. In your mind.
More likely.
Don't look at me in that tone.
Good.
So. I guess it's it's just. You did.
Yes, I put I put Greg Gutfeld instead of Greg.
She was bad at it today.
I was in a rush. I was trying to get out the door.
That's not that bad. I've been called a lot worse than that.
That's his stage name.
I bet these.
I got Scott Connor still.
You did thank you.
I screwed up his name. I left the O. So. So. As far as. Voting to approve or disapprove. This temporary moratorium. I. I guess we'll do a roll call vote. All in favor of approving moratorium? Hi. Disapproved? Everybody disapproved? Greg Gutfeld man. Okay, I just gotta sign it.
What the rocks done? Type it up and.
I'll scratch it out and break my name in an initial. Will that work?
It will work.
I can think.
It's been with my husband. Into Worcester. It's not happy.
That's a long thing.
But at least it's not going to them wanting to go to. Austin.
If you coincide or appoint me, I'll draft.
No.
Sorry.
Yeah, okay, I just had to drive Terry down. These things.
Look aside.
Can't send this any.
So we're gonna make a comment.
The gentleman from Beckett that said that they were redoing bylaws on state. So that was you too. So so could could we tap into that to see to avert making some mistakes?
Oh, we're we're trying to follow. So it's in it's in a constant transition. I had one of those. I can't. When it comes to acronyms and names of committees, I can't. But we had a meeting last night. Committee to help with bylaws and and. We talked about and we saw some of the draft stuff and I'll send it to you.
The problem is is they go along. And Sarah can probably tell you the same thing. The town send in stuff that they want to propose him for bylaws. And the attorney general says, you do that, this and that. So that's why you have to. Say, you know, we're doing a non-bailor training, but particularly. But they kind of bounce there. Our. Request with their demands. They they make people. Just use and the adjustments will go way past that third. Two or three months that at least they.
Before that that the state.
Station.
Yeah.
And they and they're always changing. After the state breaks were done. For the ADUs, they changed them. So the stuff we have for ADUs.
Really?
Even though they're not really a bylaw, those ADUs.
So all this although ADU laws that the state said would supersede all the bylaws, then now they're superseding their own?
Yeah. They do it regularly.
Yeah.
So we could put a bylaw in now that's that's in love.
And approved.
And and given the approval from the state. Yeah, we're the attorney generals already done. And then the next month, next day, they could say.
Which is so much fun when you spend a lot of time crafting and and writing.
And then people say you got too many, too much wiggle room, like. No, we had it really tight, but the state wiggled. We didn't approve it. We weren't going to get anything through. If we want a kind of an instant, he really.
I'm not anti-green energy, but the state is by in that direction regardless.
They are. That's why when I sent you, I just can't believe that to see just.
The kind of blues, they give them. Rewards.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To come out here and they are pushing.
Yes.
Because they don't want the land in eastern part of the state. So it's what they need.
There's wasted land out there. I don't that's the part I don't get. There's brown fields out here. There's just. I know, putting them on roofs, you even even you mass, they have a whole parking lot. That people love because it's got a roof on it that's solar panels. So they don't get rained on and have the cars. And it's solar panels. And it's like five acres or more. So what's the matter with doing stuff like that, right? You say Walmart shoppers would love getting out of their cars, but I'll get there soon.
I would have loved getting on my car tonight here.
There's, I know, we if we. We could cover this roof.
I mean.
I I don't get that part. There are so many places that they could. Solar parks.
But the fire departments in there in their communities is. Pretty active.
Yes. Yep.
And the water department.
It's 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 we're just prey. The emergency is not too long ago. For the reason, I remember during John saying it's beautiful. And it's like a hidden part of Massachusetts and. You know? And the people, these people in the state also lots of them, they don't realize that. They don't care.
We can consider it as part of the state.
No.
Since since I was born.
The money doesn't go beyond Worcester.
They don't even realize we exist beyond Worcester.
No.
So what do we do in terms of? Input for. Bylaws pertaining to solar? Is that that group that you're a part of, are you spearheading that you all?
Yeah, we're we're. Right now, we're. Kind of full rushing the best ones. Right now. With the intent I have and all the suggestions and. By under sevens. That quick. And then. Discussed and. I don't know how they're going to do it. Jackie's kind of leading this. And it's kind of it's the whole committee is kind of. Mishfash. It's weird. As little as I know, I know more than a lot of people on the committee. Cool Jackie. But it's an attempt and. I'll tell you, the last night was the first time the fire chief came. And he's a pretty sharp guy. I don't know. I met him last night. I sat inside. So he's. Seven hour up on a booby dot like. There was two people in the room and nobody used it. And I was one of them. I don't know how to use it. Terry Terry showed me how to use it.
And what does what does what's his feel about? Safety, et cetera.
He feeling totally unprepared. We talked last night. So we're going to zero in on first. I my suggestion was that. We have several topics and. Particularly safety. And then to break down the subtopics like water. Do we have a water supply in fire? Contamination water. So you can take water and you could do safety issues on water. We could probably find. At least at least ten things just on water. You could do safety issues on roads. Are they big enough, wide enough? Yeah, particularly this best that they're going down here. It's on a hill. It's just so so kind of. Doing checklists like that. And we got to do the same in our decision, our decision making.
Which should we focus on first?
Well, we need to focus on the decision before people's broken chest of rope. That's coming up twenty fifth of about. Oh, just let me just step aside for a second. Sorry, I talked to those UMass guys in the fall. And I think that was their lawyer. Slick guy. Like I can tell.
That's expensive glass.
It's not like money. And I I I asked them. I was. Was that camera off?
I don't know.
So anyways, I asked them. So I sent them an email. That they won't be on the agenda next week. And. Your attorney called our attorney.
Not only wanted to be on the agenda tonight, wanted to be on the agenda preceding the year.
To to submit this stuff. Before. Before Aaron, that was in here. Told me they weren't getting in before Mar 20. I love special time. If it's not, then it. Right, we're just doing the. So that's why they're here. Otherwise, I would defer to.
And that submission isn't retroactive regarding the moratorium, art of supersays that.
No.
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 So if if it's been presented, it's. It's 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 in.
This this is what I got. I got I had I had. Christina clarifying. I I got I got an email. I got an email. Two days ago to have put them on the agenda. From Christine said. The town attorney said. I didn't know Tom attorney. I can't hear. I asked her, what's going on here? Well, he got a call from their attorney and. They are our attorneys thought it would be. Like we're putting off. So just put them on here so they can see. So I don't know what ensued especially. But anyways, I asked Christina. Yesterday. I I sent her an email and I said, I'd like to clarify exactly when. This moratorium will take in effect in common court. So it'll take that right after. But the things that are we're working on right now. Those that freeze. But when Mar 20 was off. The new bylaws will apply. They'll still be under the old bylaws. These two projects.
So so are we under the constraints of leaving? The twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth. No. We weren't. Not. Or to lawyers, but I would still like to get decision. Done. Conditions written up, decision written. I talked to Aiden. Asked me. I don't remember anything. I'm on vacation. Anyways, he's going to come and I told him we would like to have it done. And the decision in by like eighteen. I think we can do that.
We can. Snap project has its ground.
Right.
What do we have? Because there's more charred than what we're hoping they can do.
For not, for not. I would ask if you could just show. Because of the time make more difference.
But obviously.
Yeah, I I would hate. I would hate for the moratorium. To happen and then the town council say, oh, geez, we made a mistake. So that that deadline still. Missed, then they're approved, thank you for. No conditions. No conditions.
Well, isn't that why we need to speak?
Yeah. Yes, so um the document that you said, would be put a bunch of stuff in there. Between now and Tuesday.
Entire decisions, right?
Yeah. Well, we just, I just think we just need to hurt more part and get. Get those conditions in and get ready for decision if we have to submit.
I have um found the other decision.
I have obvious decision. Or say, United Chester Road, two thousand nineteen. That I got from, I got it from Aiden. I wanted, I wanted some examples. But, but they just, they walked away. No, this, this was for Lloyd Martin's.
Oh.
That was a table.
Yeah.
We didn't have anything to do with that, um ever searched.
Oh, oh, really? Why are they plugging in?
Because he's been looking for somebody, we, we, it was agricultural, otherwise I would be horrible. Only then, that's pushing it, and the state's pushing it, because it's game agriculture. They weren't getting this creative, you're in culture, that would be horrible, it's still.
Hey, right. We start today, that. When they deem subdivision applications like that. The applicant is supposed to show up, don't show up at this. So the applicant should have been. That's Lloyd Martin and.
Is he still?
Yes. Well, it's just. So. Let's just wish. Who asked for the, the, the states constantly in transition, these things, and I think. My radical theory is our, these people are pushing memory and their. That's typical government business.
And earlier I mentioned, Greg, um. Under lease arrangements, right, okay, that lease is worded, it says the property owner isn't gonna be. Responsible for anything that happens. Okay, you're only, who was gonna be responsible? And I'm thinking, you know, two years from now, who are they gonna be involved there? It's gonna be another company. Well, they switch all the time and if something happens or whatever, the town's gotta go chase through. Whoever it is, right, can't be worded, so the property owner is still can be held responsible. We asked that to be in the acidic conditions.
It can't be worded in there correctly, because it's a surety bond they put up. A sizable decommissioning bond and all that sort of thing, for that reason. Lawyers, select work.
The state, you know, like the smart, like there's a little contamination with the store. And it wasn't my problem, it was before me, right? But if he doesn't take care of it, they're coming after me.
I don't know, but there is a legal question.
Because that, his, his lease agreement wasn't his application, it wasn't there, it was worded in there. That he's released from any liability, but I mean, um. But the town should be able to bust that, you still what?
You look up, so our leased properties, right?
They reset, that will perform that.
They don't.
Wasn't that that guy?
I think that's all, almost that thing the workers. As it all the time, to end the time. Yeah, for the surety bonds and for the lease. That should come from Tim Book. We don't get it, we're supposed to get this book, we don't.
We can ask. But I, your party come in handy to look at past conditions. Where they went wrong, where we can beef those up.
We should. And we got dumped, all this was supposed to be in some. Or appeals, it used to be, but they would. Those would tell us, we need something for. They, they would tell us and then we would work in.
But there is the most.
But we, but we, we got this sometimes. These kind of transactions, before they should be some. We're supposed to plan in what roads. Where the, where the industrial sector is and business district is, you know, that's.
That's one thing.
And the signs.
We already did that, we already defined all that.
That's, that's in.
We've already defined all that. We've already done that for, for, there's maps and everything.
No, not, not, not industrial. We have residential, we have lawn pond. We do not have industrial. Oh yeah, then you get pinsling. You ask that every time.
Right on your side, the dirtbag bridge on the right inside.
She keeps, she keeps sending letters, but you just.
Yeah, she'll die soon.
It's worth finding out if, if the two folks needed to be here. For this, this, this act would slow down us accepting these things.
It could, it could negate.
Where would you find it out?
It was in our. It's in, it's in our book, I got my book here. But it was in subdivision. Yeah, it was, it was in there, I thought that that is lesson today. I think, okay, another thing, yeah, it was, thought about this a lot, the town appropriated two hundred thousand dollars. They really need to hire some professionals to help us. And last night. Jack asked, what I thought, I said, yeah, I mentioned this. And. Atmosphere one was, well, they just take the money and don't do anything, put them on a contract, a small contract, like we had PBPC, five thousand dollars. As, as needed, if they're not performing, yes, yes. Otherwise, you, you hire a consultant, they suck all the money out of you, and then they disappear, nothing gets done. We need people to get stuff done.
That's why we went to PBPC, because Ken Conley, so, Ken Paul Prostie, the floor, I'm pleased to see. Um but that wasn't good, say, somebody else, and that's why we went to PBPC. He wrote the um. Updated, we still haven't updated it. The subdivision bylaws, two thousand nineteen, he came in with a whole, a whole thing to have. He um updating it, no forms, but updating the laws and saying we needed to adjust our fees and so. Um and he did a real good job.
Okay.
No, it was Paul Prostie, he's an independent planner, and they do have independence. But they're all both of the money, we can't.
Yeah, very expensive.
And house, I saw, I'm appropriate, two hundred thousand. Yeah, they did it to. Hire to. To help out.
You stop saying that you can't find something.
The problem we got, when, you know, we could go and usually there's a. Multi-town. And one person like him goes to these towns, he also goes, he has all. Connections to Boston, state reps and stuff like that, and he gets a fee back for all the standards, and that's why we. We were having thirsts and things, we cannot go around to. They can't EPC because all the tenants around here are so. They, that's one they wrote the bylaws, but mainly because Glanford was getting damaged.
No, that's probably, that's why all the bylaws are so similar.
Yeah, but you'd also have to get them through Boston, Boston revived. Yeah, you know, you can put in a million conditions, they get it. And this is what you can put in, and it's apple, what you're saying.
Is, is coming on that committee that? The only reason, the only reason I'm asking is because. Personally, PVC, PVPC has been very beneficial to us as far as instruction and advice. But we have people, residents, like sabotaging our referrals, you know, we. We say, we're really happy with PVPC, they've done everything we've asked them to do. Well, they're paid by the state and they're going to go after, you know, like it's just this whole conspiracy situation, so. My question was going to be, is this committee able to. Define someone we could refer to, you know? Or are they going to vet these people, or, you know, is this just gonna be, okay, planning board, here's. Yet another task for you to take care of.
I think, I think, I, I think. We should be. Interviewing anybody that's gonna be planning. With this life board, I've never charged with money. Or we. We kind of got an idea. The, the problem with that, she got, you got some radicals. Yeah. Thank goodness.
I mean, I guess. We're already doing bylaws, which are our jobs, we're battling these two projects with the Gibbs Brook and the Fields Brook. We're dealing with the moratorium, now we are, the five of us are responsible for. Interviewing and choosing a proper.
I, I would, I would do it, I would do it with one other person and, and somebody from the select board, if it would help us and, and take a lot of that work.
Well, I mean, if, if PVPC has been a good advisor thus far.
I think they, I think they have.
Why wouldn't we just? I don't know.
Yeah.
You know?
See how that, see how that works. I just. I'll give you an answer on that, the tape on EPC. I think. I don't think, I, I really liked Ken, the guy, I just don't think TVC. Takes out of the box, not that, not that it work, do they, they know what works and what doesn't work in the state, so they kind of. They're kind of bottled up and kind of. That's kind of my taking. I, I do like them, I think they know what they're doing, they can write this stuff for us. We have ideas. We're gonna use them, we got Aiden now. Don't be, last week, he said, he really doesn't have much experience, so he's in a big learning curve, we get to the best. I said, that's okay.
So are we.
I know. But he's got Ken for backup and Ken for knowledge.
Yeah, actually reviewing the notes today, I realized that we were waiting on an answer from him. We had something with Ken. I think it's from the pit. And even said he'll check with Ken for bad news. She's thinking she has to go home.
No, I, I don't have an opinion with this point, I think. I'm not praising about Aiden and the amount of work that Ken's done right now, who's, who's just total friends.
Yes.
They may not be our best. For a short, you know, it's a short term thing. And, and I think that um to look at. What other towns are doing and if we can get a.
And that's my feeling, I think. Someone more adventurous, I think, as you say, than EPC. They're following temples.
Well, they're, they're bureaucratic.
They are.
They also know what's failed everywhere.
They do.
They, they've already dealt with it in this town, and this is what the attorney general said about that. When they tried that. They know.
This.
When somebody signs it, something, did he turn it down? Personal preparedness, they know.
Ken also had a lot of contacts with state reps and, and, and what, he, he dealt with them a lot. But Aiden.
They'll experience.
Need somebody that has regular contacts with.
Maybe there's people that do have contacts. Jack, Jack set me a list of plans, all this, and asked me to find. I got enough, I don't know how many those.
Yeah, that's, that was my play on top.
Are they, I, are they from small towns, are they big towns?
I don't know, I just looked at the list, they're all like commercial. Players.
And you have the channels.
No, but I know Ocam, it's going to this big thing right now. I just got some contacts. People there, that might not be a bad place to dwell, but seeing it's working there. Any of these towns, Beckett came in, they're way behind us.
They were, well, they were doing really well.
The other guy who said head of, uh, planning board, he was the chair of planning board.
That's it.
That. Said that they had.
They had their own plan.
They did. They have three applications right now. No, yes, three applications. In there, waves, suspension.
They're literally just. Going right along. I moved to close the meeting.
I would shut up. Thank you, everybody. I, if I say anywhere, press someone, can't, I think, I'm still. Sure.
You just.
And he said five. That's a, that's a morning meeting.
Yeah, it'd be a morning meeting, so that'll be okay.
What was it, eleven?
Ten.
Ten. I'm working Monday, I'm up on Tuesday.
Are you working now, Susan?
Monday night.
Oh.
I told you I was available, yes.
So Tuesday here?
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I love you, you look like the Borgin's fishing.
I grew up on frozen fish sticks on Fridays.
So did I.
I just had salmon three days in a row, I heard, I was winding last week, but I really need some salmon. So she brought me a big hunk of salmon, and I couldn't, she didn't want any, she goes, there you go, three nights. So it lasted me three days. Where'd you go fishing in May? Gimble Pond.